I'd like to call an order of the March 18th, 2014, regular meeting of the Bowling Green Board of Commissioners for the City of Bowling Green. I invite you to stand if you wish while Commissioner Williams introduces our invocation and then lead us in the pledge.
We're pleased to have with us tonight Mark Lord from U.S. Congressman Brett Guthrie's office, who's going to give our invocation.
Thank you. Bless, pray.
Dear gracious Lord and heavenly Father, we thank you and praise you for all the many blessings that we enjoy. Lord, glory is due your name for all the many blessings that you give us. Lord, we pray for our leaders as your word encourages us to do. Lord, we pray for wisdom and guidance in all we do. Lord, we pray that we would honor you. Lord, we just pray for our men and women who are standing in their posts for our freedom. And we'll just ask your special blessing on them. Lord, we just thank you and praise you for all the many good things you give us. And Lord, we just pray that we be obedient to you. In your name we pray. Amen.
Amen. Can you join me in the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ms. Allen, please call the roll.
Commissioner Dunning.
Here.
Commissioner Hill.
Here.
Commissioner Waltrip.
Here.
Commissioner Williams.
Here.
Mayor Wilkerson. Here. I believe we have some awards and recognitions tonight. Mr. Febo, do you want to start?
You can. Go ahead, Mayor.
I think Operation Pride and Ms. Angela Lettsio is going to make her debut with us tonight with her first award. So, welcome.
Thank you, Mayor Commissioners. As you know, Operation Pride has been around for about 21 years. And I'm not sure when it started, but at some point, we began recognizing residents, owners that had improved their properties and as well as businesses and neighborhoods. And this evening, we would like to present an award for the residential improvement of 181 Pinehurst Way. And I'm going to introduce Vicki Fitch, who is on our Board of Directors, to make the presentation.
Welcome, Ms. Fitch.
Welcome. We have Adam Gary. He and his wife, Ashley. Ashley, Gary bought the house in the neighborhood where I live, happened to. And so, I was driving by it every day. And sometimes it would be in quite disrepair and, you know, grass would be pretty high. And you could tell the home just really was not being taken care of. And the Garry's bought it and improved it. And you have an after shot? Yes.
Oh, my goodness.
Yes.
Wow.
So, makes quite a difference. They have done a great job.
Clearly.
Nice improvement.
Takes up his day. There we go. Okay, one, two, three, cheese. There we go. Thank you very much. Congratulations.
Thank you. Thank you so much for coming. Mr. Febo, do you have any comments?
I have two.
Yes, I have a couple of comments, Mayor. There'll be a need for executive session. Kate will read the reasons.
Pursuant to CARA 61810B for deliberation on the future acquisition or sale of real property by the city, but only when publicity would likely affect the value of the specific piece of property to be acquired for public use or sold by the city. And CARA 61810C for discussions of proposed repending litigation against her on behalf of the city.
Motion by Waltrip. Second. To Hill. In discussion. Please call the roll.
Dunning.
Yes.
Hill.
Yes.
Waltrip.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
Wilkerson.
Yes.
One other item. There'll be a need for a late file. We received from a last-minute opportunity to file for a grant, and we don't want to lose that opportunity. So, the fire department would like, through me, to add a late file for grant approval for what's called a mobile public education center. And Dustin Rockroar is here tonight to answer any questions you may have on behalf of Greg.
So, if we could add that to the agenda?
Yeah.
All right. So, I'm going to... Second. So, we need to vote on that?
Yeah. Dunning and Williams.
Williams, okay. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Dunning.
Yes.
Hill.
Yes.
Waltrip.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
Wilkerson.
Yes. Anything else, Mr. Febo?
No, Mayor. Thank you.
Approval of minutes for the regular meeting from March 4th, 2014.
So moved.
Motion by Hill. Second by Williams. Any discussion, corrections, or deletions? Please call the roll.
Dunning.
Yes.
Hill.
Yes.
Waltrip.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
Wilkerson.
Yes. This is the point in the meeting when we provide an opportunity for public comments on any item that's not on tonight's agenda. If there's anyone that would like to make comments, please step forward. Seeing none, we're going to do something just a little bit different. We're going to... We have some guests with us tonight from the State Highway Department Transportation Cabinet. We have three items to deal with them, and I'm going to move them up on the agenda. So, we'll be going to item number 11, which is Municipal Order 2014-49.
Municipal order accepting maintenance responsibility for sidewalks on U.S. 231 Scottsville Road, located in the city limits, to be constructed by the Kentucky Transportation Cabinet as part of a highway plan project 03-17.10.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Waltrip. And second by Hill. Mr. Febo?
For the sake of efficiency, I just wanted to let the Commission know that items 11 and 12 and 13 are all in the same family, and it'd be helpful if we could entertain them as a group. Thematically, the city works with Kentucky Department of Transportation to maintain the highway network here in Bowling Green. We have an agreement with them about the maintenance of right-ofways and sidewalks. And that has been an area of dispute, frankly, between us and the state over who should maintain what. Instead of being bogged down in dispute, we have decided to move forward. So, from now on, the agreement has been working for the past couple of years. Anytime we have any change of construction done by the state, we, the city, agree to take on prima facie maintenance and ownership of that new item. Would you agree with that, Greg?
Yes.
Greg Meredith is here. And tonight, we have three areas in which the state has done work, asking us to, under that understanding, to agree to maintain item number 11, the sidewalks. Item number 12, the sidewalks at the Roundabout. And number 13 is the whole right-ofway, Bristow Road. I think it'd be more appropriate for Greg to answer, but I don't even know if that's necessary if you have any questions. Leslie wants to chat.
I'd just be happy to answer any questions that you guys might have.
Any comments or questions from Ms. Meredith?
I just... Would you please states our citizens will know who is responsible for building the Roundabout? And whose idea was that?
Greg Meredith.
I did not put her up to figure.
No.
I did not. No, that's the state's idea, and it's going to be a great addition to our city. I promise you that.
Okay. I'm sorry. Whose idea was it?
It was the state's idea.
Okay.
The state? So, the state didn't have any idea?
That's on camera, right?
I didn't plan this.
That's okay. That's why I'm here.
No, I really do appreciate it, because I do receive a lot of questions about that. So, I hope everyone...
Please tell them to call if they have any questions.
Okay. Thank you.
This is going to be a big summer, by the way. We're going to build it, the majority of it, this summer. So, look for some traffic delays, some closures.
That's what I was going to say. There will be a time during the summer, two or three weeks, where the road will actually be closed, and we'll have to find a different way to get around that intersection.
Right. There'll be detour signs up, and it'll be quite extensive. It's going to be a headache for a while, but it'll be worth it when we're done. Thank you all very much. If you have any other questions, let me know.
Thank you.
Greg.
Any other questions on Municipal Order 2014-49? Please call the roll.
Dunning.
Yes.
Hill.
Yes.
Waltrip.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
Wilkerson.
Yes. Municipal Order 2014-50.
Municipal order accepting maintenance responsibility for sidewalks at the intersection of U.S. 31W Nashville Road and U.S. 231X University Boulevard, located in the city limits, to be constructed by the Kentucky Transportation Cabinet as part of the highway plan project 03-131-00.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Waltrip. And second by Hill. Are there any other questions or comments? Please call the roll.
Dunning.
Yes.
Hill.
Yes.
Waltrip.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
Wilkerson.
Yes.
And Municipal Order 2014-51.
Municipal order assuming ownership and maintenance responsibility for right-ofway purchased to construct, realign, a portion of Bristow Road by the Kentucky Transportation Cabinet.
So moved.
Motion by Hill. Second by Waltrip. Any further discussion? Please call the roll.
Dunning.
Yes.
Hill.
Yes.
Waltrip.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
Wilkerson.
Yes. Thank you all for coming in. I appreciate you being here. I know you've got to get back to work on the transportation budget, so appreciate it. Thank you. Okay, we're going to go back to the first item on our agenda, which is the second reading of Ordinance BG 2014-4.
Ordinance resounding real estate. Ordinance resounding tracts of land containing 5.94 acres from RM4 multifamily residential and PUD planned unit development to PUD planned unit development, located on 13th Avenue between Kentucky Street and Center Street, and at the southwest corner of the intersection of 13th Avenue and Center Street, presently owned by Brookside Kentucky LLC, Michael Gray Cottle, Neil Cottle, Elizabeth Cottle, Gretchen Broderick, Michael Covey, and Crocker LLC, with Brookside Kentucky LLC as contract bendee.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Waltrip. And second by Hill. This is second reading. Does anybody have any further questions or discussion? Please call the roll.
Dunning.
Yes.
Hill.
Yes.
Waltrip.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
Wilkerson.
Yes.
Excuse me. Second reading of Ordinance BG 2014-5.
Ordinance amending code of ordinances. Ordinance amending Chapter 15 Business and General Regulations of the City of Bowling Green Code of Ordances to add a new subchapter related to towing of vehicles from private parking lots and the regulation of private tow operators.
So moved. Motion by Williams. Second by Hill. Mr. Febo, do you have any comments before we begin?
I do not, Mayor.
All right. I understand. Mr. Dunning, you have something you'd like to say?
Yes, one or two. As everyone knows, this is kind of a pet peeve of mine, this towing program, our towing model, as we've been presented, and how great it is for the City of Bowling Green. All of us received an email from Kim Lancaster a couple of days ago pertaining to a young lady's vehicle. Leave me here all alone. That's all right. Pertaining to a vehicle being towed from off of Mimosa Street, which is behind the new Baptist... I don't know what the complete name is, but behind the Baptist Student Building, newly built, that faces Normal and backs up to Mimosa. Right at the edge of Mimosa, on the opposite side, is a little area that has been blacktopped and been there for years, to where there are four or five parking spaces. And beyond that is the Mimosa Apartments, which shows what appears to be their property line with curb around the areas that it needs to be denoting their property. And there are signs on the buildings, the apartment buildings, saying no parking on their property. There is, I think, I hadn't called it, I don't need to call it, but I think that it is South Side Towing Number that is on that signage. This young lady went into the Baptist Building, parked there at that particular location. And I was out there today. Another vehicle is parked at that location. She went in for 10 to 15 minutes and came out, and guess what? We all know, based on what this company does. Her car was gone. Her mother called our office, the city manager's office, Ms. Lancaster, complaining about it. And Ms. Lancaster sent us, all five of us, a copy of that email pertaining to that conversation. I, yes, I talked with the mother in Evansville yesterday. I talked twice with the young lady that owned the car, three times yesterday. Ms. Lancaster here in this office talked to her twice today, and I've talked to her three times today. And I went to the scene behind the Baptist Building, and I can't understand how or why her vehicle was towed. It is not property of the Mimosa Apartments. It can only be property of two entities, City of Bowling Green, Kentucky, or Western Kentucky University, not Mimosa Apartments. Her car was towed. Of course, in this ordinance that we are looking at tonight as a second reading of, we had mentioned in our conversations here that people, when they have their cars towed, after being legally parked somewhere, many of them don't have, as in this case, $150. This young lady is working on the doctoral program at the Western. So, we can all assume, I think, with everything within us, that she can read and write. And if there is signage saying do not park, she's not going to park. We can assume that, I think. Signage is over on their property. She wasn't on their property. And her vehicle was towed. Now, I think as city commissioners and the mayor seated up here, we have a responsibility to protect people like that. This young lady going to school and going to the Baptist Center, I don't know what all goes on in there, but let's assume it's for good purposes, whether it was for church. It wasn't prayer meeting, because we all meet on Wednesday nights for prayer meeting. This was on a Monday night. Why was her vehicle towed? Well, it's only my opinion that this business that we're talking about has what is called a spot and steal program. They spot a vehicle that is near where they have a contract, and they apparently have a contract with Mimosa Apartments. I have no problem with that, and they've said that before, right here. The problem I do have, and we've said it in here on more than one occasion, this company, no other company, has a right or the authority to tow one's vehicle off of a public street or, we're working towards through this new ordinance, off of a property when there is not proper signage. We have that responsibility right here. Not staff, not anyone else. We have that responsibility. That young lady's car shouldn't have been towed by no towing company. Shouldn't have been towed by my good friend, Backett, because she was not violating any And I think if this gentleman and his company feel so great about their great PR program, this is a classic example and a classic reason why he should refund the $150. Young lady didn't have $150 on her. She called one of her professors. They go down to South Side Towing to get her car, pick her car up. She calls the mother about the car being towed. And it is my opinion, there is a difference between being towed and stolen. So, from this point on, regardless of what we do with this ordinance, if someone calls me as one of five seated up here pertaining to their car being towed from somewhere where they are legally parked, I'm going to tell them to take a warrant out for the owner of the company and take him before one of the courts here in this community. Now, whether or not that can be done or not, you know, but I know that these violent policemen and I, I've been one, if I went to a situation where I didn't see it as a misdemeanor, I would tell them, it's nothing I can do, ma'am. The only thing that you can do is to go to the court, take a warrant out, and it'd be left up to the jury as to whether or not he issues it based on what is taking place here. This has got to stop. And if we sit here every other night up to this point and talk about this ordinance, and somebody's stealing people's cars, and my good friend, Alan Simpson, and we good friends, we're going to be friends after this old week, just like we are at war before. But these people are victims. Why should they have to pay a premium for their vehicle being towed by someone that's stealing it to get it back? Other wrecking companies are now charging nowhere near the same price. It has been said here that our staff is going to talk to the chief about raising the fees of the people that are on the tow list. This company is not on any law enforcement tow list in the area. Every decent wrecking company wants to be on law enforcement's tow list. It provides, besides their own good reputation, it adds to it by them being on the police tow list. Because they know when they call for tow, a wrecking service, and they take the inventory of what's in that vehicle, they know when they turn that vehicle over to that wrecking company, like some good ones we got here in this community, everything's going to be in that car when that owner comes back to pick it up. This is not right. It is not right. There is no way that we can look at it, or sit here and change words every time we meet, oh, we need to change this word from that to that word, or vice versa. It's our role to look after citizens, not look after Mr. Huff in South Side Towing. And I promised my buddy right here that has moved away from me, didn't want to be close to me. And she told me she was going to do that. But I said again, and I've said it once, there's nothing that has bothered me anymore in the years that I've been on this city commission than this duck-bank thing we're talking about right here, right now. It is a process of stealing that we are sitting here trying to make legal. And it's wrong. It is wrong. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you.
And I'd like for the record to reflect that I am saying or asking that this company paid this lady $150 back from towing off of a city street. Now, whether or not I can do anything to make that happen, but I wanted to say and wanted to know that South Side Towing owes this lady $150. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Dunning. Ms. Hill.
I must say, I'm thankful for my friend, Commissioner Dunning. You did not let those hands fly. That's why I voted. You handled this very well. A lot calmer than before the meeting. So, thank you.
Thank you. I would like to hear some comments from my city attorney and city manager pertaining to this.
I never received a copy of the...
Well, I don't know who received it other than us.
Just you?
I think that the copy, the copy of the email doesn't have anything to do with what is actually taking place, other than her complaining as a citizen pertaining to this process. There's nothing in the email, other than her talking to Kim, saying that her daughter's car was towed in Bowling Green, Kentucky, and they felt the car had been towed illegally.
Commissioner, the only thing I can add, and I had it quickly, and we'll move on, is during our meeting, I think we emphasized the point that these towing companies have contracts only for private property, and that they need to be very, very certain, and I don't know details of this one either. I have not seen the email. I've not seen the site. But they need to be very, very careful when they tow a vehicle, that they are towing a vehicle from the property of that private property owner. And I think we emphasized that in the meeting, that there's no authority to tow from a public street or any other property, other than the property that the person actually owns it. And I think we tried to emphasize in the meeting that if you have a doubt as to where this car is located, don't tow it.
And for the benefit of the public too, I'd like for them to know that the purpose of this ordinance that we're considering here tonight is to protect. It's to establish rules and guidelines that have to come into play before a vehicle can be towed. It requires a certain amount of signage. It requires, it sets limits on towing fees. So, all of this is meant as a protection. It's not, it's not something that is authorizing something to happen. Any other comments?
So, the next time, and there'll be a next time, this company tow's off of a public street, then are we sitting here saying that we have no responsibility as a government entity to provide support for that victim?
No, I'm not going to interrupt you, but I can answer this. No, I think Commissioner Williams is right. I mean, this ordinance is not legalizing the activity. The activity is occurring now. The purpose of this ordinance is to help regulate it and to control it. I think this new ordinance will give you one tool that we didn't have before. I think you've already mentioned it. If this, in fact, vehicle was in fact towed from a public street or Western's property, and that particular tow company did not have the authority to tow from there, and I'm not saying they did or not. I don't know. But if they did, then that's a potential criminal charge, that they can talk to the Commonwealth Attorney's Office or the city police department, and they can pursue it criminally. What this ordinance will help us do with the licensing program, if this is a company that's licensed through us, and we get complaints that they are in fact towing off of public streets and not following the rules and regulations, this ordinance in fact gives us the ability to suspend or to terminate their license to tow vehicles in the city. So, I think this does give you a stronger tool than what we have before.
And I agree. We have more than what we had at first, because we didn't have that. Suppose that our, one of our departments, let's say our engineering department goes up there and looks at that spot and says, yes, that's our property. What do we do then for that young person, that young lady, that paid $150 for her car being stolen? What do we do as a city? That's my question.
Currently, without this ordinance, I think probably only recourse is probably to pursue criminal charges for car theft.
By whom?
But you can still do that regardless of whether that ordinance, this ordinance is in place.
Yes. This ordinance, I think, will give you a second tool with the licensing program, because now they can file a complaint with the city. If, you know, if the police department issues a citation for them for violating this, then they can take the towing company to district court for that citation. And then administratively, we can now look at their license to tow in the city.
What do I tell the young lady tonight or tomorrow and her mother when I call them?
Well, I'll defer to Kevin here, but if you want to, we can send somebody down there to try to determine if somebody...
I would like for that to be done.
Well, but the problem is, maybe, I don't know, because I haven't seen the email either. I'm not too sure that I know exactly where the car was parked.
I'll meet you there. I can show you where the car was parked. Go ahead, Kevin. I know this thing, this bothers you. You don't like to discuss this, but this is a young person in our community whose car was stolen off a city property.
If her car was stolen off a city street, she should file a complaint tomorrow, and we'll execute it if it's true.
Okay.
That's what she should do.
Okay.
You guys are cops. You know the rules.
Yes.
I don't know the rules as cops, but you guys do. If someone stole her car, she should file a complaint, and our police department will investigate. And if her car was stolen, we'll do something about it.
Okay. That's what I'm asking. So, our first step is what?
She needs to file a complaint with our police department that her car was removed from the street.
Our next step, Joe, if you've spoken with her, if you would call and ask her to contact the police department, and then we'll take it from there. And I think our officer here in the back will probably come in early to take care...
And they already know exactly what I'm talking about.
I was going to say, they know half the story already, so they can go in and do it.
They already know exactly what I'm talking about. They already know exactly what I'm talking about. Well, I'll be glad-
If someone's doing something wrong, we'll try to correct it, but they need to file the complaint. And under this new ordinance, not only can they currently file complaint, right, that somebody stole their car, Jean can also take administrative remedies if someone has a license and has not followed rules. They could be, have their ability to tow in the city totally taken away, which you don't have now.
And the fee's gonna be reduced, you can no longer charge a hundred and fifty, the max is a hundred and twenty-five.
I, I wish we'd have knew something about this, but, you know, it was obviously a political, you know, it didn't come to staff.
It just came yesterday.
Well, no, it was a political email, we were sent by your office, by your assistant, to us, all five of us, I don't know.
They didn't ask for staff, they didn't ask for police department, they didn't ask for the city attorney, we weren't involved in the process other than the first time we heard about it was tonight, which is terribly unfair to us if we're supposed to act on-
This is not a personal thing of some being unfair to someone, this is a thing about a young lady, a citizen, that is in our community, whose car has been stolen off of public
The proper way is for the police to investigate a complaint. All of us know the facts are, are very evasive and elusive, so let's have the police look at the facts and see if this car is in fact stolen off of a public street.
Okay. You gonna have direct one of your policemen to talk with me or to any one of us?
I think the person's car who should be stolen, was stolen, should take care of that.
And she will.
And not a third-party beneficiary or, or a third-party person. She needs to have an interest and file the complaint.
But they gotta know who she is. And I'm the only one that knows who she is as of now. I need to direct them to her, and I'd be glad to do something.
If you wanna give me the name tomorrow, I'll make sure that our police investigate and report to her our findings. And it may not be as it's set, 'cause all of us been involved with different things, it may not be as it's set, so we need to please to-
What do you mean, "may not be as it's set"?
I haven't investigated the case. You've heard her side, have you heard that Southside Towing side?
No, and I'm interested in hearing the Southside Towing side. Only thing I'm interested in was that I went up there and I know it's on city property. You can go up there, you're set as a city manager and determine. It's not even very difficult to do and see that it is city property. Don't have to be no brain surgeon engineer, only thing we gotta do is go up there.
Okay, so you're, you're gonna give Kevin the, the name and phone number?
I'll give Kevin the name and I'll tell her to contact him and the police department and whatever we need to do.
That'll work.
The steps are gonna be followed in this particular instance. Don't know about the next one, but in this one, whatever steps is available now, regardless of whether ordinance is passed or not, the steps are gonna be, are gonna be followed, and I will make sure that they are.
All right, so the next step for the ordinance then is to see if there's any other discussion? Ready to call, roll, please.
Dunning.
This is for the second reading of the passage of the ordinance that we have in front of us.
Yes.
Hill.
Yes.
Waltrip.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
Wilkerson.
Yes. Municipal Order 2014-41.
Municipal Order approving the reappointments of Melissa Rudloff and Charlie Pride to the University District Review Committee.
So moved.
Motion by Hill and second by Waltrip. Both this one and the next one are reappointments of people who have served very well on the committees that they have been assigned to, and look forward them to redoing. Any other comments or questions? Please call or roll.
Dunning.
Yes.
Hill.
Yes.
Waltrip.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
Wilkerson.
Yes. Municipal Order 2014-42.
Municipal Order approving the reappointments of David W. McKellup and Tony Whitney to the Bowling Green Audit Committee.
So moved.
Motion by Dunning, second by Hill. Any comments or questions? Please call or roll.
Dunning.
Yes.
Hill.
Yes.
Waltrip.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
Wilkerson.
Yes. Municipal Order 2014-43.
Municipal Order authorizing and accepting bid number 2014-17 for the purchase of three, of a three-quarter ton truck for, for the Public Works Department from Gilly Hyde Auto Group of Glasgow, Kentucky in the amount of twenty-eight thousand, six hundred and eighty-one dollars.
So moved.
Motion by Williams, second by Hill, Mr. DeFabo.
Thank you, Mayor. This is a request to purchase a new three-quarter ton truck for our Public Works Department. We went out to a public bid, we had nineteen people download the bid, we received five bidders, two asked for local preference. Despite that, the low bidder was Gilly Hyde at the amount of twenty-eight thousand, six hundred and eighty-one dollars.
I'd just like to say that I'm happy to see our local dealerships participating in the bid process. Unfortunately, they didn't get it, but that's fine.
Any other comments or questions? Please call or roll.
Dunning.
Yes.
Hill.
Yes.
Waltrip.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
Wilkerson.
Yes. Municipal Order 2014-44.
Municipal Order approving contracts through cooperative purchase with various vendors under the Kentucky Pricing Contract for chemicals and fertilizers for the Parks and Recreation Department in an amount not to exceed eighty-one thousand, five hundred and twenty-four dollars and forty-eight cents.
So moved.
Second. Motion by Hill, second by Dunning, Mr. DeFabo.
Every year, the city uses a large amount of fertilizer and a weed killer in our Parks Department, primarily in, in the golf courses. We use a state purchasing contract that affords us a better price with, that has already been negotiated by the state of Kentucky. I'm here tonight to ask you to approve four contracts up to eighty-one thousand, five hundred and twenty-four dollars. Tony Whitmer puts a lot of effort into this, and he's here if you have any questions about-
Comments or questions, you got all dressed up for it, surely he's got something.
I'll bring him up to the mic and just let him go right back.
Please call or roll.
Dunning.
Yes.
Hill.
Yes.
Waltrip.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
Wilkerson.
Yes. Municipal Order 2014-45.
Municipal Order approving proposals through a purchasing consortium initiated by Western Kentucky University and further approving agreements with Valor LLC for local and out-of-town card fuel service and Key Oil Company for bulk fuel supply service.
So moved.
Second. Motion by Waltrip, second by Williams, Mr. DeFabo.
Our goal is always to get the lowest price for products that we use. We, in this particular case, joined with other governments, WKU, sorry, other organizations, WKU and BGMU, and at one time, the school district were involved in a consortium to purchase fuel. We're here tonight to report that, that process has worked well, and we, we're recommending to you that we go with Key Oil as, and Valor Comp Fuel for our needs. That's divided into three different parts. One is fuel at the pump, fuel at the pump out of area, and bulk fuels. This process will save us approximately two thousand dollars a year. It's not a lot, but it's two thousand we have yesterday, so we recommend your approval. I want to thank Jeff, WKU, and BGMU for working with the city to try to save us money for all.
Comments or questions? Appreciate creativity there, looking at combining to make economies of scale.
I can't take any credit for it, but the staff did a great job on it.
I do have one comment, it brings up the issue of snow removal on Western's campus and the city working with Western staff to make sure that we had some resources and they could use to make it safer for students at Western during this last snowstorm, so thanks to all of them.
And Med Center, and the Med Center, Jeff? Where's Jeff?
They have requested, but that didn't as Western out of the-
Okay. Well, we are willing to do it for the hospital.
They were very good though.
Yeah, thank you. Thanks. And what was your comment about students?
They're citizens also, so we, we try to help.
Thank you. Please call or roll.
Dunning.
Yes.
Hill.
Yes.
Waltrip.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
Wilkerson.
Yes. Municipal Order 2014-46.
Municipal Order approving Warren County Downtown Economic Development Authority Incorporated operating budget for fiscal year 2014 slash 2015.
So moved.
Second. Motion by Hill, second by Williams, Mr. DeFabo.
At four o'clock, we had a nice overview by Mrs. Coron concerning the Chapter 58, new budget for the coming year. We also heard some good news about the TIF and the Chapter 58 and the progress they're making forward. This was required under our agreement with the Chapter 58, and I think we were generally all pleased at the four o'clock show and tell. And we want to thank the Chapter 58 for sharing their budget and their good news with us. We recommend your approval.
Comments or questions? Please call or roll.
Dunning.
Yes.
Hill.
Yes.
Waltrip.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
Wilkerson.
Yes. Municipal Order 2014-47.
Municipal Order approving tax increment financing district summary of 2012 incremental revenue and authorizing distributions to the appropriate recipients.
So moved.
Second. Motion by Hill, second by Williams, Mr. DeFabo.
The city provides under the tax increment, increment financing arrangement, eighty percent of all new city revenue is produced in the TIF area. The Chapter 58 gets eighty percent of new money and we get twenty percent. We give that money after we do a reconciliation by Jeff and his staff. That process for 2012 has resulted in the Chapter 58 giving approximately three hundred and nineteen thousand dollars for fiscal year 212. We'll continue to do this every year. As Jeff has said in the past, this increment is expected to grow as more development occurs in the TIF district. Jeff, you want to add anything to that?
And just for the public, the increment we're talking about is new revenue, it's not, it's not new taxes, it's not an additional tax. We have a threshold of about, of 2007 for most of the area, and whatever tax revenue we received at that time, we continue to receive along with cost of living. Anything over and above it that's generated, above our threshold, is then divided eighty, twenty, with the city getting twenty and eighty going to the Chapter 58 group. Any other comments or questions? Please call or roll.
Dunning.
Yes.
Hill.
Yes.
Waltrip.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
Wilkerson.
Yes. Municipal Order 2014-48.
Municipal Order approving and authorizing the donation of property by the Intermodal Transportation Authority Incorporated to benefit Bilstein Cold World Steel LP.
So moved.
Second. Motion by Hill, second by Williams for Bilstein.
Bilstein?
Bilstein.
Is it Bilstein?
It is, I got corrected at the announcement.
Bilstein is one of the exciting new members of the Bowling Green commercial and industrial family, who are glad to have participated through the JDI P, and tonight, I think we're also here to honor a part of the deal, which was for the city and the ITA to give up to Bilstein as an incentive, approximately sixty-four acres. There's a little more in that, some of that was needed for Warren Rural Electric Substation as well as various bond incentives. But essentially, we are approving the giving of ITA land to this company at no cost. The value of the land at twenty-five thousand acres, about a million six, that's sixty-four acres, which again, shows our commitment to foment and bring new jobs to our community.
Jobs, jobs, jobs.
It's all about jobs. And so we, we have a vested interest in Bilstein and hope they do very well here, 'cause we're a partner. Meredith Robinson from the ITA in the chambers here if you have any questions.
Comments or questions? Did I get that correct? Come right up, Meredith Robinson.
I will share this one exciting note, the governor's top 25 list came out last week, and this project was the number one largest attraction project in the state for 2013.
Good job.
So, thank you very much for all of your help and continued support.
I know you guys work tirelessly to bring in things like this, thank you. Any other comments? Please call or roll.
Dunning.
Yes.
Hill.
Yes.
Waltrip.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
Wilkerson.
Yes. And our late file is Municipal Order 2014-52.
Municipal Order authorizing and approving the submission of an application for Homeland Security Grant Funds through the Federal Emergency Management Agency Assistance for Firefighters Grant Program in the amount of one hundred and twenty-eight thousand, one hundred and thirty-two dollars for the purchase of a mobile public education center for the fire department.
So moved.
Second. Motion by Hill, second by Williams, Mr. DeFabo.
Thank you, Mayor. We learned about, I learned about this opportunity yesterday through Greg, that the fire department can apply for money from the Homeland Security, a special division that allocated for fire departments, and it has special conditions for it. One of those conditions is for education. Tonight, we're here to put in five percent of, of the cost of what is known as a mobile public education center. Essentially, this is, is a trailer that will be used to train the public about various firefighting and fire prevention services. Greg couldn't be here tonight, but is able adjunct Dustin Rockwora is here if you would like to come and make a few comments. It's up to you, Dustin, able adjunct, come right on up. How you like the able adjunct?
That is great, thank you. Yeah, the fire department has, has learned through working within the state and other departments that there was a grant availability for a prevention trailer that we had considered anyway for that, for that program, and with the help of Madisonville Fire Department, we were able to go ahead and pursue that grant. Now, the grant closing is this Friday, so it's a ninety-five percent with five percent match, and we're asking for the approval for acceptance to apply.
Thank you. Any comments, questions?
Speaking on behalf of my grandson and mammer with firefighters and, and I, I think this would be a great thing for, to help educate the public and get more people involved in fire safety. It's a good idea.
All right, please call or roll.
Dunning.
Yes.
Hill.
Yes.
Waltrip.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
Wilkerson.
Yes. We'll take a five-minute recess and go into closed session, I think we are gonna have a vote coming out of it.
We expect to.
Sorry, Katie. Thank you for tuning in, our next scheduled meeting's April 1st. Here we return to open session, we'll take up another municipal order, but I'll need a motion and a second to add Municipal Order 2014-53 to the agenda.
So moved.
Second. Motion by Hill, second by Williams, is there any discussion? Please call or roll.
Dunning.
Yes.
Hill.
Yes.
Waltrip.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
Wilkerson.
Yes. And now consideration of Municipal Order 2014-53.
Municipal Order authorizing an agreement through non-competitive negotiations with Arnold Consulting Engineering and Surveying Incorporated for engineering services for Hennessy Way entrance from Kentucky 446 in the amount of thirty-one thousand, seven hundred and eighty dollars.
So moved.
Second. Motion by Hill and second by Williams, Mr. DeFabo.
Thank you, Mayor. At four o'clock, we had a work session, and one of the items we talked about was one of the city's biggest priorities roadwise is the Hennessy Way project. We're here tonight to vote on hiring Arnold Consulting Engineer to start the design process for the completion of those improvements, the improvement there. Price for the improvements is thirty-one thousand, seven hundred and eighty dollars for design.
Does anybody have any comments or questions? Please call or roll.
Dunning.
Yes.
Hill.
Yes.
Waltrip.
Yes.
Williams.